Order. And Ray will take attendance, but it looks as though we have a forum so we can move on. Thanks again, everyone, for adjusting your schedules for this meeting by a week because we have this contract that we'd like to execute this month. I'm not or I'm not aware of any public comment that we have to go to, but we do have consent agenda and the four, three items, which includes the minutes of our last meeting, financial reports, the staff reports have been included. I would enter, is there any discussion or comments that anyone would like to make about those items? If not, I entertain motion.
The only, I've talked to Ray about this, I am not Dr. Wiley.
Ah, okay.
Just to make.
So noted.
My son might be, but not me.
Okay. Motion to approve. Thank you. Second, thank you. All of these papers signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. We're now on to the regular item, a regular agenda. First up is the reason we're here, which is the authorization to execute a contract for consulting services regarding the Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant. Ray, take it over.
Yeah, thanks again for accommodating this rescheduled meeting and so that we can have a little bit more time to work on the contract for this project that we're kind of excited to get going. It's part of the SS4A of Safe Street and Roads for All. It's federal grant that we are applying got. And subsequently, we had to rely on consultants to help to assist us in this project. This is something, since most of you have been here for a while, you might have heard, or maybe you were here back in 2021 when the Go Safe Plan was adopted by the Planning Commission. So this federal grant is ready to update that plan. The previous plan was funded by IDOT, so Safe Fund Day, but with the federal fund day and grant that we got and also certain criteria to meet the grant program, which we subsequently got awarded, that certain things were to meet. And so we got this Action Plan Grant. And so we are proposing to have the consultants after this, we press for proposal that was issued in the selection process that was completed and that we are recommending, a lot of new group here to be the consultants to help us for this project. It's a pretty lengthy project, it's about six months. And so it basically is an update to the previous plan. The amount for the contract with the consultant is about close to anywhere under $295,000. And the rest add to coming from different local contributions. We appreciate, we need local support. And that also includes the state, city, town, county, connect transit, state farm insurance, other water regulation district, Bloomington Normal, and also school district 87. And so, of course, staff, MCRPC staff will put in the income. And so everything is an exciting project. We want this area, a lot just the metropolitan or the metropolitan planning area to be safe. We are also looking for the consultants to apply or help us to have some implications, applications, you know, that apply to the area outside of the metropolitan planning area, meaning the rural area. And so, as we all know, it's, we have heard from time to time, all this fatalities and injuries and crashes still happening. And so we've been actually doing some work in terms of public education promotion. This is one of the implementation tools, if you will, from the plan that was adopted in 2021. And we be sending to you this draft with also the minor revisions that we sent it to you yesterday, just a wording, whether they think that map. So it's really a minor change to the contract that you saw late last week. And with that, I want to recommend this be approved. And also we have consultants, from the consultant team is Heidi Thomas, who if approved by you all, the contract will be the project manager from Long Millard Grove, based in Champaign, to assist us in this project. The principal in charge for this, from that front is Ms. Case Ringford. I cannot tell if she's, okay, it looks like she's there, yeah. So she is. Would you show your face and say hi before they recognize your face?
Yes, I'm desperately trying to figure out how to get my camera access. So give me a minute and.
Okay, that's fine. And now, yeah, yeah. And so in case questions I cannot answer, you know, they may be able to answer. So with that, yeah.
Okay. Any questions for Ray about the contract?
Was this a cost that was anticipated in the original 2021 Go Safe Plan?
The 2021 plan, we did not go into like a cost estimates, but we include like different efforts. One was to pursue grant opportunities. So this was one of the opportunities that we sought after, after the feds introduced this program. So we did not put that dollar amount, so the dollar, but it fits with the grants, you know, that will be covering, yeah. So it's covered by the grants.
Any other questions? Hi there, how are you?
Hi, yes, I've got it working now, so thank you.
Good. Thanks, yeah, yeah.
Any other questions for Ray or for our consultants? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the grant as presented.
So moved.
Thank you. Second, thank you. All of those papers signify by saying aye. All those opposed, saying sign. You have your grant.
Great, thank you.
Good. Thank you for being here today, Caitlin. And.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We're now on to items for information and discussion. Luke, regional housing initiatives update.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. I have the regional housing initiative updates. Under local updates, we facilitated the regional housing initiative staff committee meeting last February 20th. And we'll also be having the regional housing initiative affordable and supportive housing, or ASH, committee meeting on Monday, March 17. During this meeting, we will be having a guest speaker, Garrett Rude, from the local initiative support corporation, or LISC. Just to give you a brief overview, LISC is a nonprofit community development financial institution, or CDFI, with offices in 35 cities around the country. They provide financing and management assistance to local partners and developers. Their program areas include affordable housing, economic development, and small businesses. And there used to be a LISC in LISC Central Illinois, house in Theoria, but they merged with LISC Chicago this year to expand their services to the entire state. Moving on to the consolidated plan updates. We've incorporated all the necessary updates for the town's analysis of impediments chapter, and the town has approved all the revisions, and they are currently waiting to go out for public comment and once their budget is approved. For the city, their public comment period ended last February 23rd, and they did not receive any public comments. Moving on to other local updates. We also are currently working on updating the income qualified housing area median income white paper. So that should be out by the end of this month. Moving on to the regional housing recovery band updates. The DCEO Rice Implementation Award is still pending. We should hear from the CEO hopefully by the end of this month. Moving on to other updates. We also attended the debut screening of WGLT's documentary, Frozen and Forgotten. This documentary is about the experience of the unhoused in Bloomington Normal during the cold winter months. Originally, they had, they were scheduled to have one screening that night, but they had to turn down a lot of people because so, a lot of people like showed up and they showed it twice that night. And so that shows how important the issue of home access is to our community. But if anyone wants to interested, the documentary is available in the WGLT's website. That's all the updates that I have. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Luke? If not, thank you very much, Luke. Jennifer, the HSTP update?
Now to the other direction. Seems fun. Okay, as you know, we've been talking about this for some months now. We will be having a joint meeting of the Region Six Policy and Technical Committees in Pontiac next Monday morning, so we'll be spending some Patrick's Day on this topic. The committee will discuss the progress in creating a consortium of the three counties outside of McLean and Cankey, which is part of our Region Six. Cankey has its own agreement with IDOT now, so McLean County. So the remaining three have in fact entered into an intergovernmental agreement to proceed as group. And we just found that out this afternoon. And so we'll be talking about how the integration of various services in those three subsets will work going forward. And the proposed consortium of those three counties, that's Iroquois, Ford, and Livingston in the lead, will also obviously support social service agencies within those counties in their transportation needs. I was at conferences last week in Springfield, and although the Connect Transit Board has not yet acted, but expects to do so this month, IDOT announced that Connect Transit would be taking over rural service here in McLean County. That's pretty much all we know at this point, and there will be some details to work out. And we'll know more when the Transit Board meets in a couple of weeks. And because so much of the plan that we adopted for Region Six back in last June relied on the fact that there was a single provider of transit services for the entire five county region, we are now looking back at the plan for two reasons, to look at implementation of portions of it that have priority, but also to consider how it may need to be revised to account for the fact that we're now going to have two providers splitting the region apart somewhat.
Good. Any questions for Jennifer? Great, thank you. Ray, Veterans Parkway Cordial, open your plan update.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, if you recall, last month's meeting, we located that the survey that was going on. And thanks again for all your help in push to get the word out. So the survey was closed on February 28th, the end of February. And we have received preliminary numbers from the consultants. We received a total of over 100, over 930 completions, responses. That's pretty good. I think that additional extension time, you know, help and also all the efforts, you know, to have to, you give it another kick, you know, to get the word out, that really helped. Appreciate it. And also many partners were doing that. And so the consultants had include the survey results as well as other outreach efforts into a draft engagement report. And that they have submitted to us for review. And we also shared with the project steering committee for their review. And then additional report is on needs and opportunities. And that's kind of what we call Phase Two Report. As we call the project, it's divided into four phases. And so this other report for Phase Two Report Draft is also available for the project steering committee to review. If you're interested, I'll be happy to share. Let me know, I'll send you a copy of the draft. The next meeting is going to be this Friday. And if you're interested to see it, let me know. I'll be happy, you know, to have you see it. Although we have, we have, there's a chair of the commission on the committee as well and also another member of the planning commission serving on that project steering committee under different hats. The consultant is going to, or starting to work on the phase three of the project, which is all like analysis and studies, where the more technical stuff. And that part is going to take actually more months to undertake, you know, that portion of the project. So it's moving along, it's on target in terms of following all the milestones and the way that's been going. So we appreciate all your interest and support and really get the word out. Also, we want to point out that the public engagement is not done. Right? The survey is done, but when the consultants, after they finish all their analysis, when they come up with different alternatives, different options to look at, there'll be also public engagement opportunity, public outreach, just to, for the public to provide input on how they view the different options. So, so yeah, it's a kind of continuous engagement process from my perspective, so just FYI. So any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer.
Good. Ray, will there be any overlap or dovetail between the Safe Streets Initiative we were just talking about in this? So how will that, I mean, will those build upon one another?
Yes, the Veterans Parkway is more like a focus on that corridor. And then the SS4A is really broad, regional. And of course, those concepts and ideas for safety, you know, it will be a shared, you know, that we report actually when it's done. SS4A will be done by like September, and that will be shared. But then also we have shared the previous version, the one that was adopted in 21 with them also. So it's kind of related because safety is one of the things on for Veterans Parkway, but appreciate. And we, we want to make sure they, that relationship, you know, is all considered. But of course, the SS4A is applied for all. And since we mentioned the safety plan, we also have a state grant that we received that we will be working on RFP pretty soon. That is for, for like a public education campaign using different medium, using different ways to promote transportation safety. And we got a state grant on that. So you probably will be hearing more on that one once we start, you know, on the RFP stuff. But that's another effort, going back to your question earlier. There were recommendations in the previous plan, the 2021 plan. And so we constantly look for opportunities, grant opportunities. And we know it's especially, you know, since last few months, so that those grant opportunities don't come, especially for the federal grant opportunities, don't come easy, they don't have that many as in the last few years when we were able to apply for. So, but yeah, we'll keep our eyes open.
But to dovetail on that, when will the crash and safety analysis be completed by Sam Schwartz? Like, will it be something that will be useful?
Right.
I mean, I acknowledge what you're saying, like different areas, but, and I'm biased because I'm an East sider, but like, Menorans is heavily like trafficked, right? So I would think that would be a useful input too. And also at state specifically, McLean County Regional Planning Commission is to provide the crash data to the consultants, so.
Yeah, and yeah, I think, yeah, the quest data, actually, they, they have the data on the crash already. So what they're doing is to, I mean, they have a lot of data already, actually. So they're analyzing those and then plucking into the different sections of the corridor. And so to come up with ideas, how to improve the safety and of course, other considerations such as land use, you know, in the vicinity, was the impact on economic environment, the underserved communities, the environmental impact, all those will be taken into consideration. So yeah, they have the data already. And of course, in terms of improving safety, we don't even, we should not be even waiting for that, that plan to be completed. I mean, it's a constant effort, ongoing effort to promote safety. But you're right, I mean, if there's certain physical or the infrastructure type considerations, if there will be changes or improvements to certain intersections, those have to be, to be considered.
No more thoughts.
Please don't.
You spoke with the county board about the Veterans Parkway.
Yes, I think, yeah.
I got a couple of phone calls from neighbors that are county board members. Oh, good. That I think acted as though they really weren't too aware of what was going on with, with that until you had spoken, then they were very interested and kind of asked me, well, you're on the Regional Planning Commission, where is this from? And I'm like, I don't think it, I guess, I didn't even totally know how to answer that because I knew what we had approved and, you know, all that had been brought to us. But I guess, what, what was the historical background of, did the town of Bloomington and the town of Normal and city of Bloomington and the county precipitate us going, seeking that out? And if so, where's the, there's some disconnect, I think, there with the, and I'm not asking you to solve that, Ray. That's not my point, I just thought it was very interesting that it seems like there's, there's a real disconnect with what's happening and kind of why it's happening, maybe. I'm not sure if that's.
Yeah, a lot of times, and depending on the type of grant, just so you all know, because a lot of contracts will come through MCRPC, the commission, versus the county board, for example. Because we are NPO, Metro Potent Planning Organization, and also by according to our bylaws, we have the authority to sign things, the chairman or myself, depending on the nature of the documents. But whenever, they have like grant programs, going back to that race grant, the Veterans Parkway, how, how did it start? Just to give you a background. So the federal government published this notice of funding opportunity. And so we said, okay, this for this race grant. And it's covered a lot of different functions and different types of plans. And actually, those days is divided into two different type grants. One was a planning grant, one was implementation grant. And it was a new program, new in terms of the name of the, of the, of the grant, but actually it's going back, that type of grant goes back to, what, 10, 12 years ago, and the different names, but the latest one was called Race Grant. So internally, we saw, we saw that, hey, it's a great opportunity. So actually, we initiate a discussion with some of the staff, you know, from the county engineer to city staff, town staff, engineering, planning, and transit, and a few others too, and say, hey, what are some of the potential projects that we should apply for? And for us, we are regional agencies, right? And so we're interested in something more regional. It's not just urban area or versus whatever. So we, we as a group, we came up with a few projects to consider. And as a group, we decided that Veterans Parkway was, with all this pressure, safety concerns, all those, that it would be the appropriate project that we should apply for and target. It was a really short timeframe. We worked hard, including Janet and Phil, the former staff, city, town. We worked as a team. And we submitted the application and thankfully, we got selected. We are one out of 27, I'm not saying the country, and the only one in the state that received that Action Plan Grant. So we're really thankful, but it was a team effort, including, you know, all the different folks. So why, because I, depending on the county board members, because we work with county administration, because they're treating the money, the county highways department, where you want, of course you want. And I recognize some of the county board members at Neil. And, and, but if, like, the different committees, we have the transportation policy committee that also we have a representative from the county board serving on it. We have the transportation technical committee, we have really different agencies, not just us. It's nothing too high either, and we want to really get the word out. So now that the project has started, and I think it is good that to bring the awareness of that project, because we want to, not just for information, for the county board members, city council members, town council members, and the general public. Because otherwise, you know, the surveys, okay, what is this project? But also recognizing, things sometimes don't move as fast, you know, when we have federal money. And also, this also morphing a good chunk of contribution by the state from IDOT, which is unusual. And in fact, just so you know, this is the first time that IDOT is giving that good chunk, but then also the processing was because they're used to giving our grants, they're not used to be, because they own the role, we managing the project, but then they making, giving the money to us to be the local match. So there are actually additional steps in, I don't want to, you know, spend a lot of time on this, but there are a lot of conversations between the federal highways administration, the IDOT, and us and our local partners, just see how the financial part works. Because even for the contract, IDOT is the, although we applied for the original grant application, IDOT eventually, after everything works out on paper, they are the recipients. And we are the first tier sub recipient, just think about all the complexity. But everything took time. So we, yeah, we, we are just so, we are just able to work and really in the community and put together.
I think this is just an example of, unfortunately, the county administration didn't catch up with the board members to get them up to speed initially with, with things. So, and Ray's presentation was kind of, in some cases, one of the first times that some county board members were hearing about it.
Right.
So.
And this wasn't an individual that was necessarily what I would consider a new board member. I mean, new as in the last.
Yeah, I think it's just catching up.
Yeah, exactly. That's why I was curious.
Because I know both municipalities have talked about Veterans Parkway and how the road has been evolving over the years. And it's changed from a bypass to now a major artery for Bloomington Normal, so.
But I thought it was interesting, it was quite honestly, I picked up the phone and it was like, what are you guys over at the Regional Planning Commission doing over there? I said, well, hey, wait, listen, I think it just comes from us. I think we do what we're kind of charged to do. So I said, probably need to talk to your folks. And I was sorry to interrupt.
That's all, that's okay. Is this grant funding secure? Yes, yes, we.
And it's not in hand?
Yeah, not in hand, but the federal portion, you know, for the, for the race winner. The federal portion, the total project was $595,000. The federal portion was $100,000. So so far, we've expanded with use of that portion. So we should be, we actually, I think, yeah, we put on the, all this paperwork. So the rest, you know, we should be okay. Good, thank you.
No, any other questions?
I mean, I think, I want to zoom out on this a little bit and tell me if I'm lying, Carl, but like, I think this is something that's worth monitoring throughout the year is, to what extent is the county board agenda like overlapping with the things that Ray and staff are working on? And, and what do those touch points look like? And how, you know, because we're talking about the root cause being the administrator failing to catch them up. So to what extent are they conferring with Ray when an upcoming agenda item touches with the.
Yeah, and I think they are, I think Cassie and Ray talk to each other on a regular basis per se. I think it's just the, when Cassie gets the information to her board, and that's one thing that I don't think we can touch on, that how Cassie communicates with the rest of the board. Her board, that's their issue.
Yeah, and if I may point out, yeah, the chairperson of the county board's transportation committee, now it's been renamed, you know, the new, right? Oh, reorganized, restructured, but used to be the transportation committee of the county board. So the chairs sits on the transportation policy committee. And staff, you know, typically would update, you know, the committee, I mean, grant opportunities and all those major things. So, so yeah, we do that. But of course, like us, then that's the chair, but we can defer to that person to get the word back to the board. But, but yeah, I think it'll be great. I mean, we, we wanted to support, you know, we want the, it's a committee, it's a regional type thing that you all, you help us to.
But I think, I think your point's an excellent. Well, I think, I think your point's an excellent one, because I think the end goal, or at least where I was trying to get with this is we're doing all of these things and these studies, that's great. The final outcome is what I think is the only thing that should be driving those things. And if these federal dollars are coming in to do that, and we end up having a disjointed study with an actual what the plan is, are the folks that implement that plan, that, that is a little concerning.
I, I think that we have all of the pieces aligned in terms of the people in the county, in the city, in the town. They're all working together cooperatively with all of this per se. My guess is, is that there are probably going to be some people who, like any public process you go through, and you're never going to get a hundred percent buy-in in terms of what happens with the plan necessarily. And also, this is a plan. It's not an actual implementation of things. What the plan calls for and what actually happens is several years down the road and will be continued in terms of discussion and such. So the plan will not be the be all and all. There'll still be plenty of time for the both municipalities and the county to decide what should be done and more importantly, what shouldn't be done.
If I may also add too, usually when, because yeah, we, you know, we're in the midst of this planning process. But if for the other previous plans that we have completed, that you have adopted, like who say, from the reality to, to safety, I mean, Jen and I, you know, after the plan was adopted in twenty twenty one, we made presentations to the county, and that, under that situation at that time, I think it was one of the committees, not the full board. We were, we were told, okay, this committee was surprised. I think either the executive committee or the contract based committee. But we, we did make presentation to one of the county committees. We make presentations to, to like city council, county council, and lots of different committee organizations. Because we would like to educate the community about the, about the plan, because we're ready to see how the plan can be implemented. And so will this Veterans Parkway grant, what is, hopefully, you all will adopt in September of twenty twenty six. Then we also ready to go out and promote the plan and just whatever the recommendations will be coming out from that plan. And same, same thing for, for the S S four A and the other ones. So yeah, sometimes it's during the process, people don't see it because it's, it's not concrete. It's not like, yeah, because like the, the highway department, the county highway department, they have gotten grant on extension of some trail, some rural areas. But people don't see it, you know, but they're working so hard on it, you know, getting lighting and other things. So it's not something that immediately will pick up either. And that's another thing when, when staff and the consultants, back on the Veterans Parkway, when they did the intercept, what they call an intercept, intercept interviews, like going to like businesses along the, the corridor. Some people haven't heard about this project, but they were glad to see that and they were glad to see, hey, you actually put people, real people, including staff, who went out and talked to them and kind of trying to get their input. So yeah, we just through different ways, we're trying to engage because we need their support. And even like county, city, town, the, the, there's so many other grant opportunities. We continuously need their support. When we apply, we need their funding for like making us the local matches. And so, yeah, we, we need that partnership, definitely.
So Ray, you mentioned that from the federal side, there was a hundred thousand dollars. How did you determine that a contribution to the rural funding from the other entities from city, county? How, how was that?
Okay, yeah.
Just roughly.
Sure, yeah. Actually, those amounts have to be determined when we apply, is part of the application. So when we select a project to go after, I mean internally, so we had to prepare budget as part of the application. So with, so for that case, we, we reached out to the partners, potential partners and say, we got this project, just, I use the term begging for money. How much can you, you know, you contribute? Because it's tricky. It's not just how much they could put in together, because we cannot overestimate the budget, because the feds, they also have a formula. Also, they looked at leveraging, if, you know, how they put in, they would love to put in as little as possible, but the local matches would be as much as possible, right? So from, to win, we don't just want to apply, you know, just for the sake of, and turning in application. So much work, you know, effort, we want to apply to win a year or more. So we had to be strategic. So when we look at the budget, so we had to figure what the, you know, how much it would cost overall, then we play with the percentage. And then we're trying to get as max, the maximum amount we can possibly raise from raising funds from the partners. So we got, reached out to them. And fortunately, we were able to get a good chunk from the local ones. But then I D A, we also spoke with them and they recognized it's their role. It's communication, it's partnership, it's the understanding of the work that has been done over the years, it's the reputation, I think. And even before my time, that they know, you know, they can trust us. So they were able to say, okay, we're going to match whatever you can raise locally, we'll match one to one. And so that's a, and so the more we can raise locally, the more we can get from I D A to match the federal as a local, for the, for the match. So as a result, we were able to get to the amounts closest to what we think reasonably for the overall budget. Because if we set it too high, we can always enough fund to meet it. But if we set it too low, we won't be able to do the project, right? It's underfunded. So we have, we have to be really careful, really strategic, not putting a lot of thought into how it to play the numbers. So I don't know if I answered your question.
So it was basically voluntary from each entity, how much they wanted to.
Yes, yes, voluntary. Yeah, yeah, voluntary. But I, I'm thankful for, yeah, like for on that one, you know, for the local governance and then the transit, I mean, they, and I D A, you know, they were willing to achieve because they know how important this is to them, to the committee and also the service, services that they will be providing, S O B services, definitely.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
If not, or doubt to anything else that needs to be come before the commission today? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. So, thank you, Mark. Second? All those figures signify by saying aye, at the same time. Thank you, everyone, for delaying this meeting for a week and coming today.